Well, thank you. All right, I can stand here. I can stand here and not be in the way.
What's that? I know, I'm waiting for the...
Oh, sorry.
This looks like the setup for a fresh piece of this.
I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure everybody had a take. Just shoot me later, it's okay.
New setup, pump on.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Rollinsford zoning board of adjustment. Today's date is September 12, 2018. This is the first meeting of the newly appointed order of adjustment, and we adopted some rules of procedure. So, looking at the order of business, I believe that the... How do I call the case, the meeting forward? That there should be a roll call by the reporting secretary.
Okay, of the members. So, members present are Paul Casial, who is an alternate, Sonny Foss, who is a full member, John Henson, acting chair, who's usually the vice chair, Dianna Rollo, as a full member, Andrew Jacks, a member, Ben Hemward, alternate.
Okay, all right. So then we'll begin the public portion of this hearing. There are no minutes of previous meetings, because this is our first meeting. No one finished business, so... For the purposes of tonight's hearing, because the chairperson has recused himself, I believe I need to designate an alternate for tonight's meeting to sit as a voting member. And...
You have three full members.
Okay, so I don't need to do that. Okay, and I won't do that. All right. So, the new procedure indicates that the secretary would read the application before the board.
Okay. I don't usually do this.
All right, well, I'm sorry, I was going by the...
So, the application is submitted by... I'm sorry, Phil and Bonnie Jensen, 125 Bear Road, Rollinsford, New Hampshire. And they are applying for a variance. And I'm just going to read straight from the application. The undersigned hereby request of variance to terms of Article, Section 7, but Note 9, in actual said terms, we wage permit a lot line adjustment between lot numbers 7-3 and 7-4 tax map 3, allowing a 9,500 square foot, quote-unquote, even swap of land between the lots resulting in a growth area of two acres per lot. And...
I'm not going to have to read the attached sheets, but these will be those by...
And then, do I need to make a body of notice?
Please do that, yes.
So, I have Scott and Alan Ericgoney, Mark West of West Environmental, McHugh Revocable Trust of 1996, Bonnie and Phil Jensen Revocable Trust of 2017, William and Karen Staines, the Buckston Revocable Trust, Paul Connolly of Civil Works of England, Miles and Evan England, the Kavalsen Revocable Living Trust.
And looking at, again, our procedure, we've gone over the public notice and how Chris Millet was given. The way we're going to do this is that we're going to have the applicant provide a statement as to what he's looking for, and then the board can ask questions at any point during the testimony. Then after that portion ends, we'll then open up the meeting to members of the public and abutters who wish to ask questions or provide a position. When you do that, you'll be asked to state your name and address. And...
I'm going to freeze.
Then we'll go from there essentially, and then we'll do deliberations later on. So, Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Connolly. I'm a civil engineer and a land surveyor, practicing in the Stratford and Rockingham pounding areas. And I am here this evening on behalf of Phil and Bonnie Jensen. Phil is sitting to my right. And Phil and Bonnie reside at 125 Bear Road, which is shown as Lot 7-4 on the Rollinsford tax maps. On the 3, I believe. They have owned that lot since June of 1985. Shortly after purchasing that lot in 1985, they proceeded to build their home there and pool, each field, and so on and so forth, and have resided there for the past 33 years. Prior to that, the land was owned by Ruth Emerson, and that lot and the lot behind Phil, which fronts on Fresh Creek Road, known as Lot 7-3, tax map 3. Both of those lots, as well as five others, came out of the Emerson parcel in 1980 by subdivision that was approved by the Rollinsford Plank Board. So, those lots all came out over the years and have been sold to different people and homes have built on them. In 1981, Lot 7-3 on Fresh Creek Road was purchased by George and Louise Marston, and they've owned that and been taxed on it as a building lot for the past 36 years. In May of last year, Phil and Bonnie purchased Lot 7-3 from Louise Marston. So, what you have before you do this evening by our application is basically and simply just two requests. One is for an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements. We found this to be necessary after we went in there and did some survey work, and we found that Phil and Bonnie's house was a little bit encroaching, at least at the garage, on the front 50-foot yard setback and a little bit encroaching on the left side yard or the yard adjacent to Fresh Creek Road. And that encroachment is about 12 feet, where, again, 50 feet is required. They were roughly at about 38 feet there. I don't think anyone has known that until we just, again, done that survey this past fall. So, with that, what I would like to do in front of the board is take these two requests separately, do the dimensional equitable waiver of dimensional requirements first, and then take the variance request after that. If that's okay with you.
All right, so, there's... Mr. Connolly is... Well, let's first have discussion on that. So, members of the board, Mr. Connolly, as opposed to dealing with these two matters as a whole, you'd like to deal with them separately, meaning the equitable waiver of dimensional requirements first and separately, and have us, I believe, vote on that, and then proceed in regard to the variance? And do members of any comments about whether we should handle it as one or separately?
Is there a reason that it was submitted as one application and not two separate requests?
Just for efficiency. The two requesters.
Because it was one application.
Okay, all right. So...
It was either if it's one, it's all or nothing. If it's two, at least she's got two. It's one of them, it's that way.
Oh, it's a... I only seek this because of the criteria for the granting of the equitable waiver is entirely different and the criteria required for any variance. In fact, I don't know that the equitable waiver request is a relatively new statute. I don't know if this board has even ever dealt with an equitable waiver request.
We're familiar with it.
You are?
Yes, sir, yes.
Good. So, it's all pursuant to the statute, which is New Hampshire RSA 674, Code 33-A. And I won't reread the statute, but if I could, just enter into the record the reasons why the equitable waiver should be granted. And I don't mean to have my back to the crowd here, but maybe I can swing around in front of here just a little bit more forthcoming to the audience.
Well, before that we do that, Paul, shouldn't we have a vote on how you're going to proceed? So that... Paul, what... Paul, on the board, what's your opinion on how we should proceed?
They should be separate because they're independent.
Okay. Ken, what are your thoughts?
One application, it seems like the best way to go.
Okay, all right. So, I think how we're going to do it is... So, the four of us voting members, so... There's two in favor of it being one-way, and you're in favor of it being separately. Paul and Ken aren't voting members. If I vote with you, then it's a tie. If I vote with the others, then...
This will count right now.
This votes count right now.
Also, you're going to break the tie.
So I have to break the tie.
The pressure is on.
We can do it together. I mean, I want to put the board in an awkward position. I was just trying to keep this as efficient and civilized as possible.
And, you know, to members of the public, you, Paul, if we're stumbling here, again, being our first run-through. So, if you're withdrawing that request, then we'll just do it all in one.
So, again, Phil and Bonnie built the house in 1985, and come to find out by a survey that we just did, the front right corner of the garage is about 12 feet too close to Bear Road, and the front left corner of the house is about 12 feet too close to Fresh Creek Road. Garage, this is the house here. I've been working in town since late 1985, and I've always known the front yard setbacks to be 50 feet from a road. So, it's pretty obvious, right? But it's set... I just found this out the other day when I pulled out the ancient septic system plans for the house. His plans show that the setback to Fresh Creek Road was 35 feet. I don't know where that came from. Certainly it's more than 35 feet, it's about 38. But I just thought I'd throw that into the record. It's... It was an anomaly that I didn't recall seeing until I reviewed the file again. But in any case, it is what it is. And as such, the points that are important relative to the statute are that, as I said, they purchased the house... They purchased the land in June of 1985, immediately constructed their home. Our recent boundary survey in December 2017 revealed these setback issues. Should the survey reveal that the front and the side of the existing two-story dwelling garage are set back slightly less than about 3 feet, 12 feet respectively from Bear Road and Fresh Creek Road? This condition has now existed for over 33 years. No enforcement action or notice of violation has ever commenced against the Genissens relative to the subject setback issues. The subject dimensional setback issues were not discovered until the survey 2017. The subject violations were not an outcome of ignorance of the law or ordinance, failure to acquire, obfuscation, misrepresentation, or bad faith on the part of the Genissens, but were caused by a good-faith error in measurement by the Genissens. The violation does not constitute a public or private nuisance nor diminish the value of other property in the area nor interfere with or adversely affect any present or permissible future uses of any such property. And then finally, due to the degree of the past construction or investment made in ignorance of the facts constituting the violation, the cost of correction so far outweighs any public benefit to be gained. It would be inequitable to require the violation to be corrected or rectified. So with all that, we believe that it's... It would be as the board grant an equitable waiver to allow these setbacks to remain as they have for the past 33 years. These need to be actonized, irregardless of the variance request, because it may apply to some point in the future when the Genissens decide to sell their home.
So, does the board want to... Anyone want to ask questions? I know we're going to vote on this as a poll, but does anyone have a question for the rest portion of the... Yes, please, Paul.
What was the zoning requirement in 85?
I bought.
The reason I say that is, I've got the same situation. Right now, my house does not meet zoning requirements, but it did back in 88. And then dimensions have changed. But if I didn't know that, I would be in the situation you're in. What I'm trying to tell you is, were you legal for 85 when that building from it was signed?
Well, certainly for the right front corner of the garage, no. Because that's about 48 feet or so.
But was it 50 in 85?
Yes.
It was. So how do we get to 48 then if it was 50?
Just an error in measurement. I mean, the wall out there, Sonny, is probably 3 foot wide. If you were to take the measure from the wrong side of the wall, it would easily come to the wrong dimension to act where the garage should have been.
Was the garage and the home constructed all at the same time? It was, okay. Mr. Jensen, you're a contractor. Did you build the house yourself?
Yes.
Or you did build it yourself?
Yes.
And you were in construction at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
At the time, we built the house, you did not have to do with certified plot plans, which is required nowadays. This wouldn't have happened nowadays, because if you build a house nowadays, you have to be within the setback areas. You have to put a foundation in, ask for a survey, and you have to be within the setback, between the setback. But you can't go further than the foundation to a certified. But back then, it wasn't required. Nowadays, you have to have a certified plot plan before you can go on. Because I think there's two or three other houses going here that are encroached there.
I'm not convinced that you actually need that. I won't wait until I do the zoning and it's working. And I think that's a fair question. I don't know where I could find it, because she's my English.
Well, to your point, I'm not sure we need it either. But I don't want to take any chances.
I don't know if we should grant something really not needed. Because this is really not to be taken lightly, an equitable waiver. I mean, it's just not something that just arbitrarily would hand out.
And we do not take it lightly. We do look to the law.
No, I understand what you're saying.
A lot of that. And I think all the criteria except for the 674, Code 33, are that.
I do have a question on the setback that's more egregious, that's closer to the Fresh Creek Road. To me, that's the unknown of... Was it 50 feet at that time that the structure was built? Yes. We built before that, so I'll be quiet.
Sorry, I'm on my turn.
Let's just say it was.
Okay.
Okay? And... This is not the point anything groozer putting in what culpable, but Phil had a resident of the town, Bob Burson, prepared the septic system plans. And they are right here, 1985.
There's two residents in town. Well, Burson was a resident of the town.
Yes. So, he wasn't at the time, but at one point he was. So anyway, I looked at...
He did what?
I looked at the plan, and you can see right here, it shows a side yard setback of 35 feet from Fresh Creek Road.
But that's the septic plan, you're...
I don't know how you're going to find out.
Yeah, because I think the septic approval is considered...
It shows 50. It shows 50 from Bear Road, right? 50 from Bear. 35 from Fresh Creek. But I don't know. I mean...
So what about the proposed plans for the actual construction of the house that were submitted as far as locating it on the property?
This is it.
I thought this was just the septic... Oh, it was included with the septic design?
Yeah. So, for lack of a better expression, I think this is an honest mistake. And that's why the RSA 674-33 was developed to basically cover an honest mistake or as the alternative would just seem to be, for lack of a better word, ridiculous. What sense would it make to pull up the whole house, move it over 12 feet and back 2 feet? It's been there, sitting ready for 33 years.
As you stated in your remarks, you know, the town has not issued any violations, so it's reasonable to believe that there will be no violations going forward. I agree with Sonny that is this really a necessary waiver? My concern is the effect that it has on the Fresh Creek Road and the encroachment within that 50-feet setback.
Any other questions for the board of this people, if you... Okay. So, since we're dealing with all of one, in one matter, then I'm going to have you go into the next part of the call, and then I'll open everything up to public discussion.
So, again, back in 1980, these two lots were created by subdivision, and the... I don't mean to turn away from the crowd, but the division line between Phil and Bonnie's house lot here, 7-4, and the lot on Fresh Creek Road is presently shown as the green line right here.
That was their water right here, the green one?
Yeah.
Before they bought that lot?
Right.
Okay.
Still is to this day. Phil and Bonnie would like to build a house on the back lot and sell the front house. I mean, they're kids all grown up, and there's just two of them. And the back lot is not an easy lot to build on, as it is right now. Back in 1980, there were no regulations, subdivision regulations, specific to excluding areas on lots with steep slopes, with wetlands, with easements or right-of-ways, excluding those from the net area, two acres required in this zone. And the basic point is that on the front lot and the back lot, there are steep slopes. They're shown in gray here. And there's wetlands on the back lot, back here at the low part. So, technically speaking, all the lots, right now, pursuant to existing 2018 zoning orders, are not conforming. They don't have a net two acres exclusive of steep slopes, wetlands, easements, right-of-ways, that type of thing, both less. So, back to what they would like to do, in wanting to build on the back lot, there is a rather good area right here, exclusive of steep slopes, and it's quite close to the wetlands, that would be a good place for a house. So, we said, okay, let's just do a lot line adjustment between Phil's front lot and the back lot, which is represented by the two orange boxes. Those are two equal areas that would just be swapped. The parcel shown as A would come out of the back lot and be become part of Lot 7-4. And the parcel shown as B, in orange, would come out of the front lot and be appended to the back lot, which is shown as Lot 7-3. So here's the old lot line, and here is the new line, even swap. Now, if either one of these two little swap lots didn't have steep slopes, we wouldn't even be here. Okay? Because it would be an even trade. In swapping those two even pieces, would not make either lot either any more conforming or more non-conforming. But by doing this, and because this pink cross portion of parcel A is containing steep slopes, we therefore, by adding it to front lot 7-4, we make 7-4 a little bit less conforming in that it has more steep slopes now. But at the same time, we make Lot 7-3 a little bit more conforming, and we make a better place to build up here. Now, we try to build back here in this steep slope area without doing this swap. But A, you would have to get a conditional use permit from the Plank Board and a conservation permission to build on steep slopes. B, it would be over closer to the wetlands. And why would you want to do that? When an easy solution exists... When an easy solution exists to not have to touch or impact the steep slopes, which are considered to be conservation areas now by the zoning ordinance.
Can you even build on that back lot? Is that going to be up with class six road?
Well, I would ask that question, although it's really not all that germane right now to this board. The nineteen eighty subdivision approval and the plan that was endorsed by this planning board, this is zoning board, the town planning board, contain two conditions of approval. And those conditions are stated verbatim in our note number twelve on the plan that we submitted to you. And they say, quote, "The approval is subject to restrictions on lot number one." That's lot seven dash three on Fresh Creek Road. One, no building shall be erected on this lot until town reopens a section of Fresh Creek Road by voting to remove gates and bars. And two, road Fresh Creek is brought up to acceptable town standards. So in order to build back here, pull a building permit, have a select and assignment going permit issued, Phil and Bonnie have to address those issues with the select board. So just to review. Is that my name?
Sure.
Lot seven three and seven four were created by subdivision and approved by the planning board in September of nineteen eighty. And lots seven dash three and seven dash four are respectively shown as lots number one and two on the approved subdivision plan. Two, both lot number seven three and seven four contain land areas with steep slopes as defined as slopes greater than twenty-five percent in the zoning ordinance definitions. Lot number seven three also contains jurisdictional wetland areas. Four, either lot contains utility easements or right-of-ways. Five, footnote number nine did not exist in nineteen eighty. When I say footnote number nine, that's in the zoning ordinance. And that's the footnote that says in that area of a lot, you can't have steep slopes. You can't have wetlands. You can't have right-of-ways. Number six, both lots seven three and seven four at two acres each were conforming in land area as created in nineteen eighty. That's why the planning board signed the plan. Both lots seven three and seven four are now non-conforming lots with regard to net lot area free from steep slopes and wetlands. Neither one conform. The Jennisons, as owners of lots seven three, seek to build a small ranch on the said lot. They also own lot seven dash four. Number nine, the front portion of lot seven dash three is encumbered with steep slopes. I just pointed that out. As you move from front to rear in lot seven three, you emerge from steep slopes but get closer to wetlands and also remain in moderately sloped land. Number ten, the Jennisons seek to adjust the common lot line between lot seven three and seven four such that a ninety-five hundred square foot or less level portion of lot seven four would be appended to the front of lot seven three and would be swapped for an equal-sized land area out of lot seven dash three as would be appended to the rear of lot seven four. About one-half of a portion of the land coming out of lot seven three contains steep slopes and the portion of land coming out of seven four is level. As such, pursuant to provisions of footnote number nine, lot seven dash four becomes slightly more non-conforming. Okay, that's Phil's existing house lot on twenty-five Bear Road. Slightly less non-conforming because it has a little bit more steep slope way out back. The buildable portion of lot seven three becomes larger and practical. The building potential of lot seven dash four is unchanged, whereas said lot was developed in nineteen eighty-five by the Jennisons. Then finally, the proposed buildable portion of lot seven dash three thus becomes ninety feet plus or minus closer to Bear Road. So if I can just go through the criteria required to... For this board, the grain of variance in this case. Number one, the grain of variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Subject lots are existing lots of record. No additional lots are being created. Quality of lot seven dash three is being increased and no harm or diminishment in quality of lot seven dash four. Arguably, the public interest is better served with a better quality build area on lot seven dash three. Graining this variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
Well, somebody didn't ask a question. So that statement that the quality of lot seven three is being increased and no harm or diminishment to quality of lot seven four, aren't you adding more steep slope to seven four?
Yes.
So isn't that diminishing seven four?
Not with regard to the improved area. So I should have stated that in my text. Improved area of lot seven four is Phil's house, the garage, the pool, the shed, the backyard, the leach field, all up close to Bear Road. This portion of lot seven four that would contain the steep slopes is all the way out in the back right-hand corner.
Okay, all right. Please go on.
Number two, the grain of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance as stated in section one of the zoning ordinance. The Rawlsford zoning ordinance and its regulations are designed, among other things, to promote and to serve the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants, to encourage appropriate interrelationships of land uses and groups of land uses in various parts of town, to secure a safety from fire, panic, epidemics, and other dangers, including flooding, to provide adequate access to light and air, to avoid undue concentration of population, to lessen congestion in the streets, to prevent overcrowding of land, and so forth, end of quote. The intent of the zoning ordinance is not in any way compromised by the request of variance. The intent of the ordinance is better served by creating a higher-quality lot seven dash three at no expense to the quality of seven dash four. And I should have said, no expense to the improved area of lot seven dash four. Number three, the grain of the variance will result in substantial justice. In this case, substantial justice will be realized by providing a better building area on lot seven dash three, increased building and septic system setbacks from jurisdictional wetlands, and zero impacts to existing steep slope areas. Number four, graining this variance will not result in diminished values of surrounding properties. There is no aspect of the proposed lot line adjustment that could possibly injure or diminish values of any surrounding property. And then finally, five, literal enforcement of the provisions of section seven, footnote number nine, will result in unnecessary hardships. If the proposed lot line adjustment could not take place, the following would result. A, request for conditional use permit, as I stated before, and construction engrading on steep slopes. B, construction closer to jurisdictional wetlands. C, more removal of existing trees and vegetative cover. D, more earthwork would be required. And E, higher site development cost. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it at that. Certainly, I'm willing to answer any and all questions your board or the public may have.
All right. So what we're going to do is I'm going to ask members of the board, now the public's very patient, I appreciate that. Any questions that they have, Mr. Conley, Mr. Jensen, in regard to the second part of his presentation.
Yes, I have one.
Paul, please.
Okay, I don't know if it, you know, pertains to us today, but I've seen the location of the house, the septic tank, or well, will that all conform to the town, state, and federal requirements?
Yes, absolutely. They have not been finalized, but suffice it and safe to say that the house, the septic system, and the well will all be in the general area of these level swap area noted as parcel A on the submitted notice. Be roughly right here. Some of the house construction goes beyond the lot line that would be abandoned over in here. Basically, everything in this place right there. That's why we show the setbacks here to show that we could be...
And what I see is with the proposal, lot seven point three will still be only fifty percent of the required minimum lot size.
Net.
Yes. Well, net, which is the same as the minimum lot size, which is total area minus the wetlands and the steep slopes.
Yes, that's just about precisely right. Existing net area for lot seven dash three is point eight seven acres. And then the proposed net area is one acre. So it actually increases a little bit. And the front lot where Phil's house is decreases a little bit from net one point nine one down to net one point seven nine.
And so that's why I asked you if you would be meeting all the building regulations of the state, the town. So we've got half the lot to meet.
And that's why we're here tonight, to permit this lot line question. Otherwise, if I can answer the question in another way, we do not expect to come back to this board because the house they want to build fits within the setback lines. And we done a test fit out there and we know that it passes in support of the septic system that would be approvable by the town and by the state.
Now, concerning that's the rights that you have. Have you done any improvements since nineteen eighty-five to lot seven point three? I did state that, you know, that you were paying property taxes as you build a lot. You're supposed to pay.
I haven't purchased a place yet.
Okay, but somebody else was.
Yes, this is last in favor of us.
So those rights are transferred to the...
No improvements ever.
Okay, and concerning the property taxes. We said that on lot seven point three that you were paying property taxes as you build a lot.
Yes, probably. There was a time when we could access that information online and I remember seeing that last year. You can't access that information anymore, at least online. But when I did look at it late last year, it was. And I could see the history in that the property taxes hadn't been paid on it.
Yep. But I guess the thing which I'm getting at was, you know, was you paying property taxes for at a hundred percent assessment for the net area?
The property taxes, from my memory, were not equivalent to a full-size, two-acre lot and on a paved class five highway. They were more consistent with a lot that recognized, the town recognized, was on a class six highway and that, you know, had some wetlands and steep slopes on it.
I think the town reprised it at thirty-four thousand at the time it was paying taxes on it. That's what they were taxing on thirty-four thousand.
Because they considered the wetlands, or they considered the steep slopes, or they considered the roads that were...
Fresh Creek is closed. I think Fresh Creek Road is closed.
Subject to ease and bars.
Correct. So when you split this, this is actually going to become landlocked. It was landlocked up until he bought it, pretty much. Fresh Creek Road is really not open. It needed to be opened by the town meeting. There's no void in town that can open that road by state law.
Well, we're going down a road in a discussion that's really not germane pertinent to the issues before the board tonight. But I will tell you, and this is very, very much a portion of state law and policy that's been well trod. There's a very thick book on the whole matter. And despite the fact that Fresh Creek Road is classified as a class six highway subject to gates and bars, does not mean that it's landlocked. He can access his property over Fresh Creek Road right now, as can anybody else with property on Fresh Creek Road. They have the right, and the public has the right, to use and trove over Fresh Creek Road. Micycles.
Yep.
By what, so forth. So it is an open road. It's just subject to gates and bars. So it's not maintained by the town.
Correct.
It's not plowed. And you can't get a building permit if not it when it's in class six status.
Okay, so we're in agreement there.
Yep.
So now you've got to go to five.
We have to go to five, positive.
Plus, all the town documents and guidelines for building on a class six will basically build up to six hundred feet, three feet of road, one house for the select.
Okay, I just noticed there was a new policy.
And they adopted some guidelines that said you could build one house. Plus the six hundred feet back.
Not by any...
Minus one, be full of...
Yeah, that's... But there are ways. So it can go class six, it can go to class five. Depends on the outcome of the discussion with the select board. And the select board may lean on, depend on, the planning board's guidance. But ultimately, it is the select board as the building inspector. The building inspector in town of Rawlsford is the select board, although he is designated person to do inspections and so forth. And they are the agency that originates and authorizes building permits.
Correct.
So we need to have that discussion with them.
To make it a class five road, then they don't have to plow.
Sonny, I want to add though, but when this subdivision was originally done in nineteen eighty, it was with the specific restriction on this lot, the subject parcel, that no building shall be erected on the lot until the town reopens a section of Fresh Creek Road by removing the gates and bars. And number two, the road is brought up to acceptable town standards. So that subdivision was specifically with those restrictions by the town.
Yes.
Okay. So you're looking to negate them?
Nope, nope. We're happy to upgrade the road to current subdivision regulation standards for five hundred feet of road, which would be eighteen inches of gravel, topped with three inches of bituminous asphalt pavement.
What's the width of that?
Eighteen feet.
And is there eighteen feet available?
Yes, there is. However, we don't know until we engage with the select board whether or not they ultimately want that. Okay? If they do?
Right.
If they don't, well, that's fine too. You know, we could improve it with gravel. Just for an example, for instance, we could improve it with gravel and agree with the town to have the Jennisons maintain it at no cost to the town. The improvements would be no cost to the town. It depends on what the select board really wants in terms of a look, how it appears, in terms of what they want to have ultimately running down the road in time. But, you know, we can go whatever way is most desired by the town and the town vote, if you will.
I didn't want me to interrupt you, Sonny, but I didn't think that...
It's me on seven three going down Fresh Creek.
You know, seven three, the...
I'm sorry? That's a private property all the way from Fresh Creek all the way up to Old Mill.
All right, so what we're going to do is...
Yeah, well, yeah.
We're going to have the numbers, the public speak, maybe you're on. Does anybody else have anything?
I do, I have some questions.
Please.
Go ahead, you may. Go ahead, you ask, no, I'm still listening. So, Mr. Jensen, I'm very familiar with this lot. I live in the vicinity, I walk the property all the time, so I'm very familiar with the steep slopes and the situation on the land. I just want to call, you did mention several times that the house that you currently reside in wouldn't need current zoning, but that's really irrelevant. You built it in 85, it meant zoning at that time, so that's, that's really irrelevant to our discussion now. The back lot that you said you just purchased in 2017, and you indicated that it was being taxed as a buildable lot. The deed in which you purchased, acquired the property from Mrs. Marston, I believe the transfer tax indicate a purchase price of $3,500. So, to me, is that a purchase price? I mean, did that indicate to you that it was a buildable lot? To me, that's a pretty nominal amount to pay for two acres of land.
It's been, it's been people tried to build on us for years, but because of the steep slopes and everything else, it's, the whole reason was they couldn't, because they just, I mean, they don't be able to put a bullet and get a variance for all these, and try and put it in this area. And it was a protest on the other end when this was approved in the Lake Rillies, but it's in this pond right here, and to get the setback and bring a crowd to help us in this pond, it'll always, it'll always be focused on, you'd have to get variances from the board and the conservation board and anything else. Mrs. Mastin sold it, she was second to pay taxes, all they did, that's why she wanted to get rid of it, so she didn't have to pay taxes, and that's why she wanted to unload it, because she couldn't sell it to anybody else.
But you acquired it with the understanding that there were restrictions, that, you know, it may not be a buildable lot, that it was just going to benefit your current property, and you were going to just acquire an additional two acres.
Right, and the road had the restriction that you had to bring it up to town standards, and that's one of the reasons why they went for it.
Right, right. And that, that's the concern that I have with, with the setback of your, of your house now, being within that boundary of the Fresh Creek and within that 50 feet. I'm not sure what issues that would pose if this does proceed forward.
Essentially, the lot is quite a portion of Fresh Creek Road where his house is right now, so it's hardly the least best area to, or easiest area, I should say, to widen it. But specifically the sales price, I think that sales price also reflects the effort and cost it would take, not only to get things, thought costs to get things approved so that he could build on it, but also hard cost to do the improvements to Fresh Creek Road, which he knows would have to be out of his pocket. And if he was spending all that money, it would be regardless of what a house lot would cost in town today.
Right. Or he could just continue with the quiet enjoyment of the additional two acres on his lot as it currently exists.
Mm-hmm. Oh.
I mean, that's the other option, is if it isn't a buildable lot, which it, you know, you're still under the, the two acre minimum requirement that, yeah, you're still under that two acres, so you're, you're asking for a buildable lot of, of about an acre. That still includes slopes?
No, it's without the slope. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but put to one, you know, one acre is minus the wetlands and the slopes.
No, it still includes slopes. The grading in that one acre, if I'm understanding this grading properly, it still is steeply sloped in that bottom portion that goes out to the wetlands. Yeah. And this, here it shows the slope.
So it's one acre net?
But it does still, yeah, it does still include slopes, so you won't have two acres.
Well, if tables wronged.
Nope. So it's, it's one acre net if the lot line adjustment is approved, and right now it is .87 acres net. Was that your question?
Uh, yes.
Paul, on the, I'm trying to remember the real estate transfer tax form. I think it is a place that indicate if it's being sold for less than market value, was there indications on there why it was being sold for less than market value? So nothing about the, I mean, you've said it's because of the cost of the improvements, et cetera, none of those were included on the real estate transfer tax?
No, no, because they haven't been done yet.
I see, yeah, okay, all right. Board have any more questions, or?
Yes, just one. Where is the stormwater going from the driveway and adding roots?
It will basically and exactly follow where it goes down, so it's basically all from the front of the lot, straight down to the rear, to the wetlands, over those slopes.
There are two slopes.
We're going to, I was very patient, anyone else have any question?
I'd like to hear some.
All right, so, so at this point, I'm going to open up for public comment, and given our procedure, I believe that, and forgive me for being, let me build a new procedure here, so that, again, I'll recognize folks, raise your hand, state your name and address. And I believe that the way it's supposed to work, and I don't remember if the board may correct me, is that when I have a question to Mr. Conley, you're supposed to ask it to the board, and then Mr. Conley will answer. So I'll open up for public discussion, and we'd like to go. Please state your name, please.
Karen Staines.
Karen Staines.
Okay.
One seventy there.
And we are the house adjacent to the Jensen's house.
Okay.
I wanted to just say thank you for letting us address our concerns tonight. We've lived in Rollinsford since 1978. Did Dodier did our septic system? We first lived on Sligo, and then purchased the land directly from Ruth Emerson in 1981. The Genesins, there are actually two owners before the Genesins purchased the property. That's neither here nor there, but we purchased it right from Mrs. Emerson, she thought we were good caretakers. We liked her very much, and she visited us, visited us a number of times once we built her house. We built her house in 1982. We were actually very familiar with the setbacks at that point in time, and when we added our garage to the property, we actually had to angle our garage, rather than sticking it straight out, we angled our garage so that it would remain within 50 feet setback from the road. So we were very familiar with that. I am going to just make maybe one or two points, maybe not much. We're just very concerned about any planned action which would allow for an additional dwelling, an additional septic system, or a well on this recently purchased property. And we also object to the removal of the Class 6 restriction on Fresh Creek Road. I think it creates a dangerous precedence, and we are the closest to others. I'd like to introduce to you Sharon Cuddy Sommers. She is an attorney we have engaged because we feel like this is promoting some actions, you know, seeking these variances, and we just, she's a lot more articulate than I am, so I'm going to turn it over to Sharon.
I'd like to address the board on a couple of points. They reduced all of this to writing, just for the record, but I will, I won't, I'm not going to read it verbatim, I'll just go through some of us and a few things. I also included, to the extent that it's helpful, a couple of Google Maps which show the Staines property and which shows the Jensen's property. I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll.
I have an extra copy. I was going to give a copy to the applicant.
The one you gave me tonight, I will.
Sure, we'll give that one to the chair.
Okay.
I'm confused, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. The recording secretary might want a copy.
So, what I'd like to do is to really just talk about the three key areas that are concerned to the Staines. And I'm also, by the way, I should say, just, just to start off with, we have no issues or objections with the equitable waiver aspect of this application. That's, that's not where our concerns lie. Our concerns lie with the variance request. And really, there are three general categories that I would say that are a concern for us. One is the fact that.
Can we go any further?
Sure.
What's your name and what law are you?
Sure, sure. My name is Sharon Sommers, last name spelled S-O-M-E-R-S. And I am with Donahue, Tucker, and Chindella, and I'll spell that.
It's okay, I know that.
Okay, okay. And I'm here representing Karen Staines. Okay? So, as I, as I started to say, we have three general concerns. One is that the applicant under the statute is charged with the burden of providing you with evidence on each of the five criteria, and we would respectfully suggest that that has not been done in this case, and therefore, the board does not have the legal authority to be able to grant the variance. I'll go through these, why we think it fails in a moment. The other two issues, which I'll discuss in further detail later on, is that the notice for this application, we believe is deficient, because we believe that yet another form of relief is required. I'll get to that. And then the third area of concern that we have is with the issue of drainage. So let me, if I can, just go through the criteria for a variance, and the ones that we don't think have, have met the requirements to allow you to possibly grant a variance here. The first one, we don't think that they satisfy the evidence, is mutual hardship. And hardship under the statute requires that an applicant show that the property and section is unique. That's number one. Number two, that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the application of the property. And number three, that the proposal is reasonable. So here, we have in the applicant's written presentation and the application tonight, no evidence that's been presented as to how or why this particular property is unique. And we would suggest that based upon what you can see in the, in the Google Maps, plus what the Staines could testify to, I took a quick peek out there tonight myself, that there is nothing unique about this property. On that side of Bear Road, in that particular neighborhood, there is a combination of properties with slopes and with wetlands. Certainly across the street on Bear Road, it's all flat, with meadows and so forth, but not in that particular locality, and there's no evidence of anything, or no argument that they've made that it is unique. So they failed on that part. Secondly, with regard to the fair and substantial relationship, what I would say is a couple of things. One is that the property is owned Country Residential District, which your ordinance describes as the purpose is to conserve the integrity and natural qualities of a road open space for the betterment of the community. Additionally, if you, this is a non-conforming lot, and the applicant acknowledges that. So if you look at the non-conforming lot portion of your ordinance, which is Section 5.41, it states, "No action shall be changed," or taken, I guess, I may have misprinted that, "to change the boundary of the lot unless it brings the lot closer to conforming to the requirements of the ordinance, and it makes no other aspect of the lot more non-conforming." So in this case, what we have here is a situation where the boundary is being changed, but it is going to, in some respects, make one of the lots more conforming, but another lot less conforming. And in the, I noticed in the lot area calculations that Lot 4 will become more non-conforming because 5,210 square feet of steep slope is going to be added. So I think right on the face of it, that this application, well, we'll get into this in a minute, but it doesn't comply with Section 5.4. So if you take those two things together, together with the actual thing that they're seeking permission for tonight, which is to have, to require a net of the two acre sizes, that this is exactly the type of application which I would argue that the purpose of the relevant ordinance is, that is, the purpose of the CR District and the non-conforming lot line, which is designed to prevent. And therefore, there absolutely is a fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the application. And then finally, the application's not reasonable, because the proposed construction will require access to the lot, and I certainly understand the points that Mr. Conley has made about state law with regard to Class 6 roads and access and so forth, but the fact remains is that the use of a Class 6 road, currently, first of all, the Class 6 road is subject to gates and bars. That is, as one of the board members noticed, or noted, is a condition of approval of an earlier subdivision. That condition attaches to the property and adheres to it even now, so that the process to get to creating, say, a driveway to, to serve this, this, this new home, should it go in, will require not only the adherence to the selectmen's policy on building permits on Class 6, but will also require that that gates and bars issue be dealt with. And I believe, Sir Sonny, is that your name?
Yeah.
Okay. I, you mentioned earlier that that would require town meeting action, and I haven't looked at that statute in a while, but I think you're absolutely correct, because certainly having a road be, become discontinued and subject to gates and bars does require town meeting action. So all in all, I, I think that there's two levels of activity that's going to be required to make sure the conditions of approval and the town's building permit policy is adhered to. And all of that is, is, I think, something that this board should take into account as a background, but if, I think more importantly for this board to consider in terms of whether the proposal is reasonable or not, is that this board is being asked to facilitate the creation of a new situation on Fresh Creek Road, which is going to be different than that which exists right now, and which theoretically could impair the enjoyment of the public. I am assuming, I drove past it, and if it's like the Class 6 road in my town, members of the public go up and down there. They go up and down there with their dogs, they go up and down there for walks, sometimes people take horses in there. If this doesn't become a, or is no longer a Class 6 road, and/or subject to gates and bars, all those activities could be interfered with. The second aspect of the variance criteria that we don't believe has been met here is the public interest portion of the criteria. And that requires, in order for the applicant to have, have met their job, they have to show, I'm sorry, I said this backwards. The, in, in order to have the variance not be able to be granted, there has to be a showing that the variance is going to unduly and to a marked degree violate the basic objectives of the ordinance by altering the essential character of the locality or threatening the public's safety, health, and welfare. So in the applicant's materials, this has not been addressed at all. There's been absolutely no discussion about how this is going to impact the essential character of the locality, and we would argue that the locality is, is as it currently exists, very much in keeping with the CR District, and by allowing a non-conforming lot, already non-conforming, to be altered so as to facilitate further building and with access via a Glass, excuse me, Class 6 road, subject to gates and bars, that you would be altering the character of the locality, and in addition to that, there's, as I said before, the use of the Class 6 road will be diminished. The final thing that we know on the variance criteria that we don't believe has been met is the substantial justice test. And this, as I'm sure you know, it's, it's a rough justice. It requires a showing that the benefit, the applicant is not going to be outweighed by a detriment or loss to the public. So here, the applicant will be benefited, of course, if the variance is granted, but there will be a, a loss to the public because of the impact on the. will be a loss to the public because of the impact on the class six road. And also, there is arguably an impact to an individual because there's no evidence presented on how drainage might impact the stains property. And we have serious concerns about that. So that's, in a nutshell, why we don't believe that the applicant has provided evidence which would enable him to grant this variance. The second thing is kind of a procedural and kind of a substantive thing taken together. The notice, which was read by the reporting secretary at the beginning of this meeting, indicated that what is being requested for relief here is relief from the requirements of footnote number nine in your table of uses, and that has to do with how the net is calculated. But in addition to that, as I read to you a moment ago, I believe that Section 5.4 of your ordinance, which deals with non-conforming lots, also requires relief because of the fact that the rejiggering of the lot boundaries between Lot 3 and Lot 4 will create a situation... In other words, that ordinance specifically says that you can't change the boundary line unless you meet the two requirements, that you make one lot be more conforming and you don't increase the non-conforming of the other lot. And that's exactly what's happening here. So I believe that this applicant needs to get relief from that ordinance as well, and that's not been noticed. So that obviously can't be acted upon tonight. And then the final thing that we have concerns about is the issue of drainage. I know the drainage is going to be handled by the planning board, if it gets to that point. However, and Karen can certainly speak to this with more accuracy and tail than I can, but I will tell you that the stains have expressed great concern to me because their property is currently wet. And they are concerned, and there's a lack of evidence that's been presented here tonight as to how the stormwater might be treated. We heard some evidence presented in the presentation tonight that it's going to flow in a certain manner. But we believe very strongly that some more formal evidence needs to be prepared to answer those questions, and we would request that that be done by this board. This board asks the applicant, which they're authorized to do, as an alternative, if the board is inclined possibly to grant this variance, we would certainly, at a minimum, ask that, as a condition of approval, that the planning board be directed to seek a drainage study, and then possibly have a peer review of that as well, in order to gather the information we need. So those are the three basic concerns that we have, and we would ask them to take those into account. And if you'd like to hear any further discussion from Karen as to how the drainage operates on her property, I'm sure she can have to address that.
Thank you very much. The gentleman in the audience.
My name's James Cusman, and I live at 95 Bear Road. My question is, it's two downhill slopes, comes in a V, and the drainage goes right into that. There's a big wetland down there, and it goes right into that wetland. Now, if you put roofs and everything else up there without any way to contain it, anything that comes off is going to go down into that wetland. And I don't think that's what the intent was with keeping it in the manner and the presence that it's supposed to be. It's going to ruin the wetland, it contaminates it. And it's a good possibility because they don't have any set plans on how to handle that water load coming off of there. If you ever go out there, it's very steep, and it goes right into wetlands. There's bogs all in there. I've hunted it, I'm sure other people have walked in it, and I don't agree with the fact that you may be granting a one-acre lot where a two-acre lot is required. It's a buildable two acres. I know there's a gentleman down the road from us, Kim, he had to buy a four-acre lot because there was only two acres that was buildable. The other two acres is wet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience who's to comment? Mr. Connelly, you're not participating as a member of the board, you're a member of the public, so please.
Yeah, just a comment as a member of the public. My concern as a member of the public is about the cumulative impacts, as the stains have represented to the board. Steep slopes and wetlands are not unique to this parcel, not unique to this part of the town. And we have quite a few properties that are, that front on ways that are subject to gates and bars. And so my concern for the ZBA is the potential that there may be lots of landowners. In this instance, the restrictions on this, you know, the inherent limitations on the property, both by the zoning ordinance and by the conditions of the property, were kind of baked into the cake at the time of the purchase. But there, I think, are a lot of pieces of land in the town that would... People would be glad to sell that below market value if they could get a variance to build on it. So I believe it is permissible for the zoning board to take notice, under vacant versus town of Enfield, of the potential for cumulative impacts. And so I believe that that may be another area of concern that the board may wish to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connelly. Anyone else that is a public to comment? So does any... I think what we'll do is turn it back to Paul for rebuttal or further comments based on what you've heard.
Well, it would be difficult for us to rebut this evening, all the points brought up by Attorney Summers. However, I can briefly speak to the point she has made. I'll start with the drainage. Certainly, the photography that was mapped pursuant to our survey of December last year shows that the drainage from the proposed building area on Lot 7-3 is contained on and wholly on Lot 7-3 until it gets down to the existing wetland on Lot 7-3. It doesn't go off onto any other lots. The land is slightly higher than Fresh Creek Road. To be said, this is remain at this particular board, I will tell you under my seal and stamp as a professional engineer, and as a Lancer Air licensed by the State of New Hampshire, that I have stated is correct and true. We will ultimately have to address those items when we submit plans for a septic system with the select board and with the building inspector designated by the select board and with the State of New Hampshire pursuant to their review for its rating for septic system approval. But it doesn't go on anyone else's property. It goes down to that button, which is on the gentleman's property, Lot 7-3.
I have to rebut that. I'm sorry.
Just so, I want to... So just so...
I'm sorry.
The rules of procedure say that...
I'm speaking from my heart.
It's okay, no, I understand. But the rules of procedure say that the applicant is allowed time to rebut, and then there'll be time given for the folks who have spoken before to rebut the rebuttal, so to speak, and then the board will deliberate and make a decision. So please, go on, Mr. Connelly.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
And I apologize.
Just to be clear, we're not stating that existing drainage runoff from Phil and Bonnie's existing house at 125 Bear Road doesn't go onto other people's property, or so basically the stains. The lay of the land there runs right towards the stained property. The best existing lot, I'm not talking about the proposed lot construction, we're talking about the existing lot does run down towards the stain. Drainage from Lot 7-3, the now vacant lot, stays on 7-3 and runs down to the wetland behind. If, and I'm not sure, but if relief was required by Section 5.4 of the ordinance, certainly that can be a notice that dealt with at another clean board meeting. I don't know that it can be dealt with seasonally because it was not a notice under the legal notice. And then finally, relative to the variance criteria not having been met, and specifically to the subject parcel being a unique parcel, are there other lots in the area with steep slopes? Yes. Are there other lots in the area with wetlands? Yes. But none are configured like this. No lot is identical to the other in the way that land was formed by the vagers tens of thousands of years ago. And that's why we do survey, that's why we prepare plans, and that's why we set forth those plans before this board. So there are steep slopes on the land, there are wetlands, and they are in unique positions such that it doesn't prevent construction on Lot 7-3, but it would make it a little bit more difficult. And the reason we're here is to make it a little bit less difficult. We're asking for a more level of portion of land to be appended to Lot 7-3, and therefore make the request for building on steep slopes go away. We'll have to do that, because we'd like to, we just think it's the right thing to do. That's my response.
Paul, how many roads in town, pretty familiar town, are class six roads? How many class six roads do we have that have the bars and gates?
Well, there's one for living here, 26 years, every takes. Fresh Creek Road, you have Lover's Lane, or...
Shadeley.
Shadeley, definitely Shadeley. Some people think that there is a class six road off of Rollins Road, opposite across the street from Themen Road. I think that's not the case. That's owned by the Dodge Farm. It's not a road. Looks like a road, looks like a class six road, but it's not a road. I think there is something down by Crockett's Crossing that might be a class six road.
There's one more. It cuts, it used to cut the corner of Rollins Road, the Rollins Road. There runs it behind, I thought it was Chase, but I could be wrong on the name.
You're right. The genative property and...
Yeah, I think it's a correct... It really does get down through there now. There's still parts of pavement in there.
Oh, you're absolutely right. That is, that is class six because it was given up by the state.
Correct.
Conveyed to the town, and thereafter never maintained. So automatically, after five years of not touching it, not maintaining it, it reverts to a class six status. So yes, you're right.
I don't think it's anymore.
I think that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you. So for folks who are rebutting, I would want to add, rebuttal, rebuttal.
Just a quick statement. The pink and yellow portions, as shown on there, he treats them as if they are just, you know, small pieces of land. They're about a quarter of an acre, and that land has been cleared already. It was done last January or February. So I can actually see very clearly if we're talking drainage. And I respect you, Paul, I know you've got a degree in that, and I don't. The back part is going to drain that way, the side part drains towards our house. There are two different slopes there, and that's all I want to say. It's a hefty chunk of land that we're talking about moving, the boundary. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Give me a question. On 95 Bear Road. The slopes, the way they go, they come down into a V, comes off of Fresh Creek and comes off the back of that piece of property. There is wetlands there, but it's not only his wetlands, it has to do with his wetlands also. So it's not just going to affect his property, it will affect his property. Just want to make that statement.
Is he asking a question?
Sure, sure.
Sir, is, you know, does wetlands feed off Fresh Creek?
No, does not feed off of Fresh Creek.
Oh, no, does, does wetland, does water from the wetlands flow into Fresh Creek?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Yeah, okay. So I'm going to close the public part of the hearing, and before we go to deliberations, I see Attorney Summers, that you asked that your September 12, 2018, letter and attachments be entered in the record, is that what you're formally asking us to do?
Yes.
So does any... Remember, the board opposed that being entered in the record? All right, we'll have it entered in the record, and Mr. Connelly, all your documents were submitted along with the application. So in terms of deliberations, who would like to begin to talk about... Oh, please, please, absolutely.
Paul, I want to clarify this. Two, equitable waiver and lot line adjustment, correct?
Yes.
I've been on this board for a long time, and this board's never done a lot line adjustment. It's always been done by the planning board.
Yes.
So why would you be asking us to do something that they would do?
The planning board could not grant... First of all, they don't deal with equitable waivers.
No, no, no. Lot line adjustment.
They could not address the lot line adjustment without variance relief from this board relative to allowing Lot 7-4 to become a little bit less conforming relative to footnote nine. Whereas it's going to have two acres of land still, but it's going to have a little bit more steep slopes than it does right now.
Is that specific what you're asking? As you asked, you specifically said she was asking for a lot line adjustment.
Well, we're asking for a waiver from footnote nine. But the lot line adjustment, we ask...
You're going to them for it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. Who would like to start with the members of the board in discussion about what their feelings are about this? Feelings or beliefs or...
Well, I will start. My concern, and I do think the members of the public, it is helpful, I know for me personally, I think the other members of the board to hear what everyone has to say. I live in this area, I'm very familiar with the land. I too own more than two acres because my land is, my property is subject to wetland, so I own three and a half acres in order to acquire a two-acre buildable lot. Those restrictions have been there for quite some time, and we all have to meet that burden. And I don't think that this lot does meet that burden. I'd be willing to hear if any of my fellow members want to try to persuade me otherwise, but with that respect, I just don't feel that the petitioner has met their burden of proof with regard to that. And I am hesitant to grant the relief for the equitable waiver because it does involve a road subject to gates and bars, it is encroaching on that portion, you know. We can leave that alone. We don't need to do anything with it. As the applicant has stated, it's been that way for 53 years, the town hasn't issued any violations against it. There's no reason to believe that the town will do so going forward. I would hate to tie the hands of the town in the future by an action that we take tonight that really isn't necessary.
Okay. Paul, what's next?
Yes, the thing that, you know, concerns me is that the subdivision was approved in 1908. So now it's 2018, and I was reading that the state recommends that after four years that there is no work done on a subdivision, and then you, you know, terminate the subdivision, just like the bill of end, except the bill of end is one year, right? Like if we bring it out. And the attorney said that was pointed to 5.4.1 in the ordinance, non-conforming lot. No action shall be permitted to change the boundary of the lot of the lot unless it brings the lot closer to conforming to the requirements of the ordinance. And it makes no other aspect of the lot or the structure on the lot more non-conforming. And it makes no other aspect of the lot or the structure on the lot more non-conforming. So this proposal will be making Lot 17-2 more non-conforming by 6% by adding 5,200 square feet of steep slope. And I also tried to get, was there anything vested in this subdivision, and really nothing. There was some trees cleared, the trucks cleared, and there was no site improvement. So also, it sounds like, it's like the lot is really not a, wasn't valued as a buildable lot if there was a purchase price of $3,500. I mean, I just bought a water ball through four or five years ago, but let me tell you, I paid a lot more than $3,500 for one acre.
So, let's start with equitable waiver. I must say no to it. Only reason being is the onus is upon most folks. If they can prove to me that they met zone 85, they don't need to do it. If 85 still has the same requirements as now, I would give them a waiver because they need a waiver just for their own home for any future stuff. But I wouldn't want arbitrarily just things handed out. I mean, we were pretty much told that it's not just a free ride, it's a law. The second lot, I think we're kind of at the con for the host. I think the host is a little behind it. I think until we can resolve some issues with Fresh Creek Road, I don't think I'd even want to touch the land issue. Because, I mean, there's been like three or four different statements made here tonight that does something to do with, there was a town meeting that was required, there's another board that could do it. I almost say that those issues need to be resolved before we should go forward. Because once we allow that lot, then we're going to do something to Fresh Creek Road. Okay? All right. Anyone else?
I'm thoroughly concerned about the impact it's going to have on the neighbors and the wetlands. That was my big concern when I saw this mount and saw the degree of wetlands over there. That's most concerning to me, and I feel that the drainage, the well issue, the septic system, that's all going to impact the neighbors and the impact of that at this point.
Let me say, myself as chair, you know, when I read the application, I thought this would be a complex case, and in a little bit I'd never be here as long as we are. And I do have empathy for Mr. Jensen, but it seems to me that this is pushing the limits a bit much. I think that, I don't think that our ordinance permits what Paul, what you're suggesting, which is, you know, the sort of swap, you know, one, one non-conform, basically swapping non-conforming lots, and I'm not saying that very well, but I don't think that that's what the statute was meant to do. And so going through the five criteria, I don't think it's, I think it would be contrary to the public interest granting the variance. I think that granting the variance would not be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And I do think there's a question whether or not you've actually asked relief from all the appropriate ordinances, including 5.4. I don't think that, again, the burden is your burden, your applicant's burden, that it results in substantial justice. Looking at four, granting this variance will not result in diminished values of surrounding properties. I think in a way you're actually diminishing Mr. Jensen's own property, 7-4, by taking away less steep land and adding steeper land. So I think you're actually, usually when you think of that context, think of the context of abutting property owners, but I think he's actually diminishing Lot 7-4. And I do think that in terms of the purchase price of seven, of the land from Ms. Emerson, that it was essentially conceded that it was an unbuildable lot. And I am concerned about drainage to the wetlands and also, and we did have a training for the, for this board not too long ago about taking consideration precedent and how, you know, if we take action that impacts one particular lot, you can open it up to argument for other landowners and with other lots, even if it's not in this particular area. And it seems to me that there's a lot of, a fair number of Class 6 roads in town, so I'm not in favor of granting the variance myself. So as I just said, the way we're supposed to do this is to sort of come up with a motion that talks about, and then we all, we vote on the motion as opposed to us voting individually, vote as a block. And so I don't think there's anything that prevents me from not making that motion. So.
Do you want to vote separately?
No, the training has said that we shouldn't vote separately, that we should vote as a block. And so I'm going to make a motion that we deny the request for both the relief from the equitable dimensions waiver on the basis that the standard of proof set forth in this particular statute was not met, and that it is not necessary because it may have, it appears to have been in compliance with the earlier ordinance at the time it was built, and that it may impact the town's enforcement of other similar properties. On the issue of the variance, I would add to my motion that granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest, that it's, that it's not in the public interest to allow this under the issues that have been brought forward in the discussions, such as the drainage, the non, creating essentially swapping non-conforming lots, and the fact this is a country residential area, that granting this variance is not consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Looking at the particular things, issues highlighted in that statute is that it would not be contrary to those issues, that, that I, that creating a higher quality of Lot 7-3 would be at the expense of the quality of Lot 7-4, that granting the variance will not result in substantial justice, in that there are concerns about the relative impact to the community and drainage, that number four, that granting this variance would result in diminished values of surrounding properties, in particular to 7.4 itself, and that little enforcement of the statute would not result in a necessary hardship because the property was acquired with the knowledge that building was on it was very likely, and the fact that was considered to the purchase, the very, very low purchase price for the property, so.
I second that motion. I second that motion that's presented.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of?
I missed a word.
Yeah, you probably did. All in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
All opposed? All right, so it's a unanimous decision of the ZBA. I thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I especially apologize to everyone for the rather halting and way which I presided over the meeting tonight, being my first time being vice chairman of this particular board, and I thank everyone for coming. And I'm hoping.